The meeting, open the meeting and just like a regular one about the open meeting law and doing it virtually.
Should I do the roll call first?
Um, you should open the meeting and do the roll call. Yeah.
Okay, so I'll open the meeting of the Board of Health.
This conference will now be recorded.
July 15th. We'll do a roll call. Matt has an excused absence. Sharon?
Here.
Rob?
Ron is here.
I did it again. Oh my god.
You called me Dawn last time.
You know, I don't know why I'm having so much trouble. My apologies again. That'll never-
No problem.
Oh geez. So we are going to call the meeting to order after I read the pursuant of Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. G F, Chapter 38, Paragraph 20, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Harwich Board of Health is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as prescribed, provided for in the order. Okay. Meeting to order.
Okay, so the first section of your work session today is just a brief update on COVID-19 before we get into the bulk of the work session. So I did put together a case update from Wednesday of last week and today's Wednesday, so we'll, I'll do another one as soon as the final numbers come out from the state. They usually come out on Wednesdays at four o'clock. As of last week, we had a total of 129 cases since the beginning of this in March and 24 related deaths. There are currently four active cases of COVID-19 in Harwich, which leaves 101 people who have recovered from the virus. And just remember, 71 of those 129 were related to the Wingate facility. We're going back into the summer season here. It's important to remember to wear face covering when you're entering stores and businesses and also when you're passing other people on the sidewalk and on the boardwalks to the beaches. As we expand our social circles, remember that frequent hand washing and vigilant social distancing are proven public health tools that work together against the spread of coronavirus. The Department of Public Health and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have put together a list of testing sites that are free and widely available. Unfortunately, there aren't any currently on the Cape that are on this website that are free, but they're just over the bridge if someone is looking to get a test for, without a doctor's referral. And if, if you go to mass.gov/info, details about COVID-19, there's a link for where to get tested and there's an interactive map where you can put your zip code in and it'll show you where the closest places are to get tested. And it will say whether a referral is required or if it's a free walk-in or drive-through clinic. We have one further update is that yesterday we were informed of a potential positive employee at the Port Restaurant. The owners of the port contacted me yesterday saying that one of their employees had told them that they were tested the day before and that their results were positive. I still have not received any actual test results to confirm that the person is positive, however, the port did take proper protocols and enacted their safety plan and closed for 24 hours and did a deep clean. They hired a specialized company to come in and disinfect their entire facility. They have been in contact with their other employees to let them know of the situation and many of them have also been tested and so far no one has been tested positive of the coworkers of this person. The port also has contacted anyone who dined on Sunday, the 12th, which is when this person who says they're positive last worked. The shifts that the person worked previously are outside of the contagious period, so we're just looking at those who dined there on Sunday. And there's no need to contact your healthcare provider or the health department if you did dine there on Sunday. The port did look back at all of their video records and said that this worker mostly worked the reservation desk in the mornings and then later on was a server for lunch and dinner. But that they've looked at the tapes and this, this server was always wearing a mask when they were with patrons and that they followed all safety protocols. So getting, becoming infected through consumption of food is very, very low risk. We actually aren't sure that that actually happens at all. So wearing a mask, if the server was wearing a mask, they were protecting the patrons from any potential exposure. So the port has put out a statement on social media regarding this and we've been getting phone calls today about it. Just rest assured that they did take all the protocols that are required to be taken and should be able to safely open again today. And if anyone is worried that they dined there on Sunday and may have been exposed, again, you don't need to contact the health department. You just need to monitor your own health and if you start to see signs or symptoms of COVID-19, which are fever, cough, shortness of breath, contact your primary care physician and get tested. So that's, that's my COVID-19 update. If you guys have questions or comments or want to talk about anything else.
I have a question.
Sharon?
Okay, are the coworkers that were also tested, will they be tested again in like two weeks?
Only if they start to show signs or symptoms.
All right, okay.
Megan, if I may, I just, I got an email this morning referring to a sign of asking people where masks on Exit 10 on Route 6. And apparently it's been there and now it's gone. And the question was what, I guess, why is it gone? I don't, I don't get out that far anymore, it seems.
Prior to the Outer Cape Health Clinic, which was three weeks ago, we did have a, an electronic sign at both Exit 10 and Exit 11 that said, "Travelers to Massachusetts must quarantine for 14 days." We didn't have one that said something about masks there. But those two electronic signs have been moved. They were moved first for the clinic for traffic, directing traffic, and now those two signs are located on Route 28, one near the harbor and one near, I guess it's near Dairy Queen on Route 28, both, on both sides coming into town. And the electronic sign does now say, "Wear a face covering or social distance." So the, we did put those two signs out.
Okay, thank you. Better play, better location for them.
Yeah, we, we were hoping to get them closer to like the downtown Route 28 where people actually are out walking on the sidewalk, but the police weren't able to find suitable locations for those big electronic signs.
Can I ask a question concerning those? Is there, is there any possibility that we could use the same wording that they use in Chatham? Where they're saying masks are required and that there's a fine of $300?
Well, they're required if you can't social distance.
All right, I think what, I think what Chatham is getting at, which I think makes perfect sense if you drive through there, is if you're walking down those streets, which I think on 28, you're gonna, you're gonna see people walking back and forth. They're not going to be able to social distance at all times. It gets too crowded. And I, there, I believe their sign indicates that it has to be worn between school, road, street, whatever that is, all on Main, all from Main Street.
That's right, because they enacted a mandatory mask zone. So Chatham, just like Provincetown, their Boards of Health enacted a mandatory mask zone on their main streets or their commercial main streets where regardless of social distancing, masks are required when you're within those certain areas. And are your, this Board of Health did not.
Is that something we could take up?
That is up to the Board.
I don't, I think that might be a good idea because I don't think people are following these guidelines.
I would agree, I would agree, because when I go down, because I take my granddaughter in there at work and everybody, everybody there on the streets is wearing a mask. And a few times I've driven through Harwich on 28, 28, I would say most of them are not wearing them while they're walking outside. And I, I guess my feeling is, I think Massachusetts is doing a really great job right now. I am concerned about the number of people coming in from other states and I've seen some from Alabama, believe it or not. I've seen two from Texas. Obviously quite a few from Florida, that's unusual, but I think that we're seeing more out-of-staters here and I think under the circumstances of the way things are going, it might be a good idea to follow suit with that. I, I think I'd rather err on the side of caution than, you know, let it open to just when you're going inside.
Ron, what are your thoughts?
I'm up in the air, actually. I don't, I don't think we have a problem in Harwich right now, but I don't know. How do you, how do you enforce that? That's the biggest problem. I don't, I don't see any policemen around Harwich Port.
All right, I guess what I'm, one of the things that I'm, I'm thinking even within Chatham, I don't know that they're necessarily policing it, but I think when you put a sign up like that, I think people are more likely to follow it than not. I think that, that is, is more of a, of a statement where please wear your masks, you know, along, you know, we could use whatever, where between these signs are, I don't know what the streets, I don't know what you would call that. I don't think they necessarily police it, but if you would see somebody, if somebody wanted to find them, you could. But I think just the, just having that information out there is going to make people more likely to do it.
Well, we can put it on the July 21st Board of Health meeting if you'd like. I, I can take the language from Provincetown and Chatham's mandatory mask zones and, and let you guys mull it over at a, at a public hearing.
All right.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yeah.
We'll put it on, we'll put it on for July 21st.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other COVID questions before we move on to the next item? All right, so item B under the work session is to discuss roles and responsibilities of Board of Health, Health Director and Health Department. So this was put on at the request of the Board, so I have included quite a few things for background in your packets. There's a lot. I know, I realize that, but there's a lot of laws that we cover. So I will just really leave this up to you all to discuss and I'm here for questions. Just keep in mind, the next item on our agenda is to develop a mission statement for the Board of Health. So that's, that's after you guys discuss roles and responsibilities and I'm happy to help with some background information if you need it.
I just had a question. When was the last time this was updated? Or is it a continuous type thing?
Which thing? The manual?
Yeah.
There is a 2016 version. So the one that's in your packets from 2010, and there was, or is a 2016 version. I did look through it. I didn't realize there was a 16 until after it was sent to me after this was posted. The, the bulk of it's the same, that all this code references and everything's the same. The links have been updated and there's some more information on new senses. And the, some of the laws and regulations have been updated, but the, the background as far, as far as what we do is still the same. Okay, thank you.
I guess my question with this, and we went over this in that program that, that I attended, that you gave me the information for. I guess my impression for most of this is that the Health Department and/or Board, okay, really has the authority to put in place the type of information like mandatory masks or particularly ones that, ones that comes down from the Governor, right? And, and I did see where, I guess it was Yormith, I think, and don't quote me on that one, but I thought it was Yormith, did override the Board of Selectmen on, I thought it was masks, I could be wrong. So I guess what I'm trying to, to determine is what is, what is the difference between the Director and the Board of Health and where the authority and responsibilities are versus the Board of Selectmen? And I guess my impression is that based on the Massachusetts laws, that the Board of Health, particularly when it comes to something like, like we're dealing with right now with COVID, all right, would be the one bringing, I don't know if it's about policies or regulations coming down from the Governor. Am I wrong on that?
Are you asking me or are you asking Pam?
Maybe anybody.
Okay.
Anybody that chooses to answer.
Well, in, in general, the Board of Health has the authority to appoint and hire and fire their staff. So in the town of Harwich, we're a home rule charter and instead of the Board of Health hiring and firing and doing any, any enforcement on staff members that this, the Board of Selectmen hire, the, the staff for the Health Department. The Boards of Health have the power, as you said, to enact any reasonable health regulation and that's then everything from putting fluoride in the water to smoking regulations and mask regulations for COVID. So the Board of Health has the power to do that. The Boards, Boards of Selectmen, in Harwich anyways, have always looked to the Board of Health before they enact any health type of regulation. For instance, the plastic bag ban and the straw ban. They went through the Board of Selectmen, but they also look to the Board of Health for advice on, on whether or not that is a good idea or not. Regulations and policies and changes that go through the Board of Health don't require the vote of the townspeople at a, at an annual town meeting. So in general, the Board of Health has a lot more power to enact regulations quickly. It just requires a public hearing, something that's noticed in the newspaper. Boards of Selectmen, if, and, and any other Board actually has to go through the annual town meeting and have, have the townspeople vote on whether or not they want the regulation. As far as policies and updates for COVID, I have been acting on your behalf as the Health Director, so I get my power through you. And the Board of Health are able to have staff like myself and Katie and Jen and Mark, we've, we're your staff and we, we follow through on the regulations that you are required to uphold, which range from septic systems to swimming pools to communicable diseases.
That makes, that makes sense to me. All right, so in this case of COVID, since it's something that's very fluid and changing from day to day, if somebody on the Board, I'm gonna say like myself, that would, you know, have a concern or, you know, a question as to whether or not we're enacting certain things, then do we go through Pam or the Chairperson, which in this case is Pam, and, and, and request a meeting since we can't do anything without a meeting?
Yes.
So that would be, so that would be, so you don't necessarily have to wait for a monthly meeting? If you felt that there was something that needed to be addressed, I could get ahold of Pam for, for you. Who do I, who, who would I contact?
Well, like any Board, the Chair of the Board is really responsible for what's on the agenda. We've, in the, in the, for, as far as we go in, in Harwich, we put things on that were on the last month's meeting. We put on applications that come in throughout the month. But any additional information outside of variances or applications that come before you is either my doing or Pam's doing. So either I feel the Board needs to know about something and vote about something or the Chair has requested that it be put on the agenda. So you would need to go through Pam if there's something specific you wanted to talk about.
So I could also just, I, if I had something like that, I could send an email to both of you?
Sure, yeah, that's probably the easiest way.
All right, okay, all right.
And if, and if the Chair feels it's necessary to put on a meeting, then we'll put it on the meeting.
Okay.
And if it's an emergency, we-
Yeah, you could call, call, not, not a regular meeting, I mean, not, call another meeting that's not scheduled.
An emergency meeting, yeah, we can do an emergency meeting for an emergency. It just requires 24, I'm sorry, 48 hours notice to post it. If it's a true, like house is falling down, we need to condemn a house kind of thing, we can do that without proper notice as long as we follow up with notice afterwards. But if it's something that we have the time to post an agenda, we need to do that per the open meeting law. But there are specific emergency type of things that we can do without needing to post a meeting properly or notify the public and that's for imminent health hazards or safety hazards.
Okay, all right, all right. I think that, that does help clarify, at least for me, kind of the different, I don't know how to put it, different areas of who you contact for what.
Yeah, and you can always bring something up at a regular meeting and have it just discussed to be put on the next meeting too, if there's something that you want to talk about.
Okay, so you, okay, so you could discuss it, even if it's not on the agenda, but you can't decide anything?
You can, you can ask if it can be put on the next agenda item, yeah, next agenda, agenda, for the meet, for the next meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Are policies ever changed without the Board of, the Board making a vote?
Some policies, like internal policies as far as paperwork goes, whether we require, well, I'm not really sure how to answer that. We, we do internally notify engineers and sanitarians if, say we are doing tests on a Tuesday instead of a Wednesday. I can't think of any policies that we've changed without going before the Board of Health. Okay.
The fact that we're doing with COVID, for instance, like putting those signs out, that's not considered a policy, is it? Since it's, what do you call that? Like just a regular, right, because it's, it's not going to be forever.
Well, like the signs are put out, I put out advisories or public information as a way of educating the public.
But that's not a policy. I would, I, I would look at it as a policy. Or is it? Okay, so, so actual policies then would have to come before the Board to be voted on or changed, whichever. An actual policy.
Yeah, we have policies that are in our, our book of regulations, written policies. If any of those written policies are updated, I would want to bring them to you guys. But I, I honestly don't think I've updated any policies since I've become the Director.
Is, so we actually, we, the Board, or the Department of Health actually has a policy book. I'm not talking about like the, the Massachusetts general law, I mean a policy book.
Our bound book of regulations and policies, which hasn't been updated since 2012, to be honest with you, does contain policies.
Is that, and I don't know how big this is, but is it possible when a new person comes onto the Board that they can get a copy of this?
It's on our website. Yep, it's, it's right on the Board of Health's homepage.
All right, but we can't get that, and I think I might, I, I might have looked at that in the beginning, but I don't remember. So is it that, not something you can provide somebody in, in-
Well, we could copy it. It's like 300 pages long.
Okay, that's kind of big.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, that's why it's electronic.
All right, all right. Okay. I guess we have to start printing.
The last policy binding Board of Health regulations and policies I have is from June 2006.
Okay, so you, you don't have the 2012?
No.
Okay. The bound ones may say 2006 on them and I think we've updated. That's something we should work on anyways. Like a, a long-term goal is to, is to update that regulation book because we've updated regulations since that book was bound.
Yeah, yeah. So the, like the change in fees, that type of thing, would, is that something that would be bound on the website, the current website?
Yeah.
Like that?
Yep, the new fees and also any new updated regulations are also on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, so fees are, are not updated. Yeah, you guys have, you guys have to update the fees. So I think that was last done in 2017.
Feels like yesterday.
I know.
So would this be something that we could, we could like start like on a, on a routine basis and start going through this on a- some sort of a schedule, like, we're gonna go through, I don't like to call it, like, chapter one or or certain policies or something, and redo them and and bring anything up to date that needs to be?
Yes, it it has several sections. We could do, like, one section a quarter or something like that. It has the the wastewater section, the community sanitation section, there's one on groundwater protection and things like that. So we we could take a section at a time and update it and get a new new bound reg set of regulations.
Is that something that 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 the Board would want to do? And I'm asking, this is the Board now.
I think that's a good idea.
Not a bad idea, you know. At least we could find out what the regulations were and see if they stay hold, you know, stay steady now.
Yeah, that would be like reviewing them section by section. Excuse me, section by section. And then, I mean, I'm sure not everything will need to be updated.
No, no, that's true.
They even have something about tattoos in this.
We we have tattoo regulations. We just don't have any tattoo establishments.
Do we have any tattoos established in town?
No.
Do we have any? Do we have any in town?
No, we don't.
That's okay.
But just in case, it's.
Just in. So is there anything in that I'm doing as far as COVID goes that you want to be more involved in or want me to do differently?
I think I think what the governor has put out has been very, very good so far, and I think most people, as far as I can see, at least around town, are complying pretty well.
Just if there's a sudden, I mean, everything seems to be nice and quiet and as far as cases.
Yes.
With other parts of the country, then all of a sudden it just went boom. So if so, yeah.
I think I, yes, I think because I think a lot of these places and down south especially opened up very early. And I think the people, obviously, when they opened up early, did not take the seriousness of it in 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 respect to what's happening. So and now I think what's happening, they see the penalty of of opening up too early and loosening restrictions.
So we did get Barnstable County did hire two full-time and one part-time COVID enforcement inspectors. And we have been given a given a time of like five to five to 10 hours a week with one of them. He has already started following up on complaints that we receive. So we we do have a mechanism for following up on some complaints that we weren't able to previously.
Well, that's great.
Yes, yeah.
What kind what kind of complaints have 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 been coming in, Megan?
Um, mostly no mask complaints about, yeah, mask complaints. Not only just on the sidewalk and things like that, but business owners not wearing masks and having staff not wear masks.
That really in establishments? Wow. That's strange, yeah. I've not seen that.
I have. I have. I was tempted to say something, but I didn't I didn't, if I'd been just a regular person, I might have said something. I just didn't want to say anything, being from the Board of Health and thinking it shouldn't necessarily come from me, it should have come, you know, you know, from this compliance person. That was me, sorry about that. Boom. But, yeah, I have seen that. Yeah. But no, I am, I don't know, I I think I think you're doing a really great job with all you have got to do, and there's only one. And you and Jen and.
And Katie, yeah, Mark, Mark, the part-time inspector's last day was last week. So it's just Katie and I to do the the enforcement follow-ups. And Jen is there to take all the phone calls.
Is there a spot for another part-time inspector? I mean, is it in the budget?
Um, we were approved to refill that position. So it's been posted advertised, the jobs on that on the advertised. So we we are approved to replace the part-time person. I would like to convert that position to full-time. That would be extremely helpful to be able to get all of our inspections done as required, but that will have to wait and go to town meeting in September.
A question on the town. Do we actually have a town nurse for for Harwich? Or is this is this or do we have a a nurse from Barnstable?
We we do have a town nurse. She's not a public health nurse. She's a the town nurse is she works with the Council on Aging. So she's an employee of the Council on Aging, and she does elder follow-ups. So referrals come from doctors' offices, like they would go to the Visiting Nurse Association in other towns. But if it's an elder, they go to her and she does their home, home care, their home visits, their follow-ups. We use the Visiting Nurse Association to do our public health nursing as far as maternal well-child visits and communicable disease follow-ups.
They're just used as needed then?
Yes, yeah, they're just used as needed. We did have an opportunity to use them for education the last two years. They did a nutrition program for school-aged kids, so they did a little bit of public health nursing. But in general, they're just on call from hospitals when a new baby comes home or if a contagious disease is in town, they do the the contact tracing and the follow-up on that.
Okay.
Some towns have public health nurses, the town of Barnstable does, but most towns don't.
And I guess I knew it wouldn't make sense if we if we can use a visiting nurse for that, it wouldn't make sense to have one that would work. It would be considered a public health nurse that would be regional, you know, a couple towns together.
Barnstable County has a public health division, and they have a public health nurse. Deirdre Adver, I would say her last name wrong, Ardverdson is the public health nurse for Barnstable County. So she does cover some immunization clinics for all the Cape Towns. And she does help us with our flu clinics and things like that. So there is a public health nurse through the county if we ever needed something like that.
Okay.
Any other comments? Questions? Should we go on to the next?
Sure. So the next item on the agenda is to draft a mission statement for the Board of Health. I'm gonna share my screen with you. Sharon had taken a stab at a mission statement and.
A very good one.
It's a stab.
So let me open it up and.
I pilfered from the others.
Yes, well, that's what we all do, so don't worry.
That's okay, you cover everything then.
There's no sense in me inventing the wheel.
Exactly. Okay, so I'm gonna share my screen so we can all read the mission statement. Okay, let's see. If I can get this out front. Here we go. All right, so mission statement, the Harwich Health Department, the Harwich Department of Health and the Harwich Board of Health take their authority from the Massachusetts General Law, the Code of Massachusetts Regulations and the Town of Harwich Bylaws and Regulations. Our primary goal is the protection and improvement of the public health for the people of Harwich. And then responsibilities, the Health Department and the Board of Health are two distinct but interconnected entities. The Health Department is a professionally staffed department with a director, administrative assistant, and health inspectors. The Board of Health is a statutory board comprised of five members appointed by the Board of Selectmen for three-year terms. One member of the board should be a physician or a person with a background in healthcare, Pam, and one person as well as Ron. And one person is elected annually to serve as a chairperson. The Board sets the townwide policies, and the Health Department handles the day-to-day operations and executes the various health laws and regulations. And then it lists some key activities which go.
Those are the ones I thought you would need to look at and depending what we what you do here or what we do here in Harwich versus maybe what some of the other towns do, either add some and or subtract from what's there. Or reword it. I thought there were some things there, the one where it said building zoning and planning board application review and comment.
Yeah, we do that.
We do? Okay.
Yeah, we do all of these things.
Okay, is there any there that you or or any that you think we missed? Or you want to reword, like, do whatever you want with it. Like I said, this was just, I just threw this together that we could have something to start with.
Yeah. I can't think of anything else. Aside from, we do a lot of nuisance complaints. We can add nuisance complaint enforcement and follow-up.
Okay.
Do you need a separate one for real estate transfer regulations? I'm just looking at the book I have, I didn't.
Yeah, yeah, does it talk about septic stuff at all? No, I don't think it does. Environmental compliance investigation and enforcement. So we could do a separate one for Title V.
I thought I had something in there for septic, and I see I it's not there. Oh, permitting and inspection of of septic systems. The second board.
Okay, yep. Yeah, so we would need to add that we review real estate transfer inspection reports. And I'll put in the Mass General Laws, Chapter 111.
Okay, go ahead.
Anything about the recycling? Needed?
I don't know how involved we are with recycling.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
Yeah, we have, we have a recycling committee that reports to the DPW. Okay, I think I think they take care of recycling.
Okay.
And you can reorder those if 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 you choose to, I, from the list that I took, I reordered some of it. But if you feel that certain things belong near the top. Like I said, I don't care what, you know, what you want to change.
That was very good, Sharon.
Thank you. I wrote a lot of lot of policies and procedures in my day, trust me.
Very good. All right, well, I can I can add the Mass General Law sections that are applicable to that and add the line about real estate transfer inspections. And then we can bring it back.
The nuisance, you wanted to add the nuisance.
A nuisance, yeah. Yeah, I can amend that and bring it back to you all for final approval before we put it on our website and post it publicly.
That sounds good. Ron, any comments?
No, I think it's great.
I'd seen some of them got kind of wordy. I was trying not to make it overly wordy, just simply simplify it so that it's concise.
Looks like you covered everything.
I tried.
And kept it to one page, so that's important.
Yeah.
That was something else I wanted to do is, I think for something like this, if you start to get into page two, nobody's gonna look at.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. That's all on the on the agenda. So the agenda for the 21st has already been posted because it's next week. Comes up fast.
Yes.
Next week, yeah. Yeah, I can't believe it's next week already, but.
Can't believe summer's half over already.
I was just gonna say that, summer's half over, and the fact that we haven't done anything is like, it's it's hard to believe that that's where we are.
So we would be if we wanted to adopt a mandatory mask regulation, which.
Before before we get into that, what are the other, what are like Dennis and Yamas and and Hyannis and Brewster and what are the other places besides Chatham and Providence Town doing?
I believe they're just following the governor's orders of masks are required when you're within six feet of someone else or when you're inside a grocery store or pharmacy or.
So what we're doing anyway?
Yes, that's what we're doing now, and that's what the law is, is outside, you don't have to put one on unless you're within six feet of someone. But I think to Sharon's point of the sidewalks in Harwich Port, even if you can social distance, you guys are looking to have a mandatory mask order or.
I think so.
Because it's pretty rare that you only have one person on the sidewalk in Route 28, so.
That's true. Now, are we are we being specific to Harwich Port or we going to, let's say, Harvard Center also? Or how how was, how would that be? In other words, are we are we being specific to those to those two localities? Or are we being mandated for the whole town?
I guess my thought on that is that it should be for the whole town mandatory by wearing when you cannot social distance, but I think those two signs. But I think those two signs at, at either end of 28, where you're going to see most of the.
Right, well, well, yes, congestion.
Then to me, that's where I think it needs to say mandatory, very similar to what, what Chad was saying, mandatory between. And, you know, and I think it starts out down there, $300 fine, it shows $300 fine, mandatory masks between school something and, I don't know how it's worded, but it's something similar to that. And, and I, from being in there, just taking Isabel in there, I mean, the compliance is unbelievable. I don't see anybody on those streets without a mask. I was really, I, I really was impressed with that. Yeah, I was.
So can we do, can we do that? Are we doing it?
We, we would need to revise the.
Well, we're going to put it on the 21st meeting, aren't we?
Well, I just discovered that that's been posted already. So we, we would need to get it revised and I'm not sure if it's, it's too late to do that.
Can we put an additive to it? Can we just add to it?
Not, not, no, because it's the 48-hour, 48-hour rule. So Jen, what's the latest? We can repost that if needed.
So I would have to repost it this afternoon because I'm not in the office tomorrow and tomorrow is the open meeting law deadline for posting.
Okay, yeah, so we've missed the 21st, so we would need to post this, like a separate meeting like this one.
Okay.
Yeah, that probably is a good idea, you don't want to wait till.
Yeah, otherwise we're looking at, looking at the end of July.
That's right.
So, and we can, you could do a, a, a meeting like this for just that.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Go ahead, Jen.
So any dates, if anyone wants to talk about that now, maybe would be a good idea. I know the end of July booked up quickly and we have to check with the town clerk's office for availability.
For.
I, I think the end of July is too late.
Yes.
I think we need to do that as soon as possible.
We do it Friday, is that too early?
That's fine, Friday, Friday's good.
Of this week?
I, I don't know if that's too early.
Yeah, that, that doesn't give us enough time for posting.
So, so even, even, even for public, let's say this was an emergency type thing. So you, or, or, or the, the board still couldn't call an emergency session without, to, to implement something without doing it, posting something 48 hours, even an emergency? I don't, I don't think this would really.
Yeah, this wouldn't, this wouldn't be considered an emergency. Right, so we would need to post this properly. Like I said, if you needed to condemn a house immediately to get inhabitants out of it, you're able to hold a hearing without public notice. But when there's a, a regulation or policy, this would be a regulation. You, you do need to post it properly so the public can comment.
So she, so, so Jen, she, she can shoot me. She just couldn't add an, an addendum to this, to the agenda to, to, that we could deal with this on the 21st? When's the 21st?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So normally I would say yes, absolutely. The office has been extremely busy today, so I don't, I can't confidently say that I could get a revised agenda posted by four o'clock. I will do my best if that's what the board wants, but calling a separate meeting might be a little bit easier, but whatever the board wants, we will make happen.
Oh, if we can't, if, if that doesn't work, then, then I think we need a, a meeting sooner than the end of July. That would be my comment to this.
Okay.
Let's see if we can go for the Tuesday, see what you, see the best you can do, Jen, that's all.
Could we have two meetings Tuesday?
Sure.
We, we would still need to post it by four o'clock today.
Okay, all right, so, all right, so it could be Wednesday or Thursday. Okay.
Yes.
That's fine.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's go with that. If you get it terrific, but don't pressure yourself over it.
Okay.
We're talking about a week, yeah.
So for the posting of that, you are looking to do a mandatory mask zone from, from where to where or from?
So we covered, well, I, I guess what you'd call about Harwich Port. I don't know what's, I don't, you know, where those signs are. I don't know what the, how to define where they are.
Okay. All right.
Like around schoolhouse down through the bankers, you know, that area you're talking about, Sharon?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, actually, the, the, the one sign that's by the, near Brax, it's that one, it's near the.
Harbor.
Harbor, okay. All right, could we say, should you say from Sacra, Sacra Tucket Harbor to, and where does the other one end? Or the other one is placed, I did see it.
I'm just.
Down past, I don't know, I don't know what to call it, but like where the shops and things are going to end, where people would normally stop walking, you know, that are in town walking, looking and shopping. So that's.
Is that K-Cod 5?
I'm going to share my, I'm going to share my screen again so you guys can see this map. So, can you see it? So right now. Let's see if I can make it bigger. Right now, the sign is here, like at the end of Gorham Road.
I'm listening.
Be right back. And it goes all the way to Dairy Queen.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, all right, so can, can you use those to Gorham Road through Dairy Queen Grill and Chill on 20? Or that gets long on a, on a sign, I don't know how to.
I think it would probably be bad, like from, from the harbor all the way to Ember. There, I don't even think there's a sidewalk or if there is, I don't know how frequent.
Yeah, now, the only thing I can think of is, is, is including the stuff for the harbor. That's why I thought that was a good place for that.
Okay.
And then maybe say to CVS or, or how about to Lower County Road, would that make sense?
Yep, yep, because there, not many people are walking here.
Walking through there.
Yeah, so from Lower County Road until Gorham Road, we could, we could have a.
Yeah. Gorham Road or say Sacra Tucket Harbor, whichever would, would be, I don't know, people will see, people not from around here, would they see, is there, because I never knew that was Gorham Road, so.
I think the harbor would be good because people would be looking around there.
Yeah.
So you're proposing not just on Route 28, but also within the harbor parking lot?
Yes, if you had the signs between that, it's going to apply to that as well.
No, no, it not, no. A mandatory mask zone, for instance, for Chatham is Main Street. So if you go on a side street, it's not applicable, you know what I mean?
No, right on 28, by section, by the harbor. Can we do that?
And, and we, we have to talk about it at a public hearing, so I'll just make sure that the posting indicates that we're looking, you're looking at putting a mandatory mask zone along 28.
Okay.
You don't have to get into the specifics right now.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. That was a good map.
Okay, all right, so we'll, does this time of day, the work for you guys? Or should we get maybe Matt? Well, we'll try very hard to get it on the 21st so we don't have to have an additional meeting, but.
Like I said, for me, I'm, I'm really flexible, once I have a doctor's appointment, I don't think I have anything till September.
Okay.
So I'm pretty flexible. It's the rest of you guys. They're working.
Let's go for, let's go for Tuesday and find out which, then we go from there.
Okay. We can get an email if it doesn't go through today to, to book it for next Wednesday or Thursday, right?
All right.
If that's a nice time.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else, guys?
Nope.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Sharon.
Second.
Ron, seconds, I am in agreement. All in favor, yes?
Aye.